Next order of business is pledge of allegiance. We're going to be leading the pledge tonight by Mr. Brian Shin. Mr. Shin, please approach the flag and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business. I'm here. Item three, order of business pursuant to Liston City Code. Section two dash twenty-six, sub F, considering changing normal order of business to hold the public hearing regarding foregone taxes and consider the related resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-five after the active agenda because such public hearing must be held and related resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-five considered following adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two-four budget. This is an action item. Councilor Schroeder?
Motion to change the order of business to hold the public hearing regarding foregone taxes and consider resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-five after the active agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Schroeder, seconded by Councilor Towesley, to change the order of business to hold the public hearing regarding foregone taxes and consider resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-five after the active agenda. Is there discussion? Councilor Littkey is joining the slide. Councilor, can you hear us?
I can, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. There being no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Next up, we have agenda item four, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, the Liston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. If you're here tonight to provide citizen comments, you can go to the microphone. Please introduce yourself and your city of residence. You'll have three minutes to provide comments.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bob Blakey. I live at six oh one twenty-third Avenue. And Mayor Johnson, if you have a speakers in front of you, you are hard to hear from the back row, so a little more volume, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm here to warm you all up tonight for the other speakers who will come after me. Almost ten years ago, I sat in the position you're sitting in right now. Mayor Kleber will remember the evening when in the third budget hearing, two counselors, Daniels and Johnson, introduced an amendment to slash the salary of the non-representative employees. It was a sad moment in time. These folks had no representation and no warning, such as what happened last week and may be happening again tonight. Whereas you all faithfully negotiated with the unions, you had an opportunity this spring to negotiate with a union, you had at this sitting council, you had an opportunity last spring to sit with a union, the police union, you had an opportunity to slash their cost of living increases. You chose not to. You voted in favor of them. But instead, last week, a counselor brings up to the public, to you all, a suggestion, a recommendation that the non-representative employees, the ninety-nine employees who have no union, you are their union. You are the ones who represent them. You wear two hats. When I was a counselor, I represented the taxpayers, but I also represented the employees. And it is not fair to come to them and say, we are going to slash your cost of living. If that was a discussion that was appropriate, it could have been appropriate, it should have happened weeks ago in the budget hearings when you were in your work sessions, bringing up then. You don't bring it up at the tail end of budget season. I remind you of that. So my final year of the council, Representative Bradbury, Councilor Bradbury, brought up, I will slash a proposal to slash the cost of living for the non-representative. I fought hard. Kathy will remember that. I argued hard that that is totally unfair. If that's a discussion, it should have taken place months ago when you start to formulate your budget. It was defeated six to one. Mayor Kleber, Kathy, Rick, you have an opportunity tonight to make a statement. And I hope that statement is a sign of support for the non-representative employees. If someone is making a proposal, you don't start with them. They have no representation. They depend on you. If you feel it's important that cost of livings should be taken away from employees, make that fight next spring when you have to deal and negotiate with the firefighters. There's where you start the argument with the organized unions. I'm pro-union, don't get me wrong. I support the unions. I have recommended more than once that the ninety-nine employees who are unrepresentative, they should seek representative representation to protect them against renegade counselors who feel that they can just attack people because they can. And that was the argument that R.J. Johnson made almost ten years ago when I asked him, why are you doing this? Because I can.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Mike Cannon. I'm currently the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four president for the Lewiston Civic Theater. Just real quick, I want to introduce our executive director, Nancy McIntosh, and to her right is our newest board member, Scott Sandeman. On behalf of the rest of our board of directors, our members, and all of our volunteers, we very much would like to thank the city council, the staff, and all the citizens of Lewiston for all their support we've received throughout the years. And with that support, we are continuing to move forward in a positive direction. A lot of nonprofit organizations, businesses, educational institutions, as well as public service agencies, experience peaks and valleys quite often. It's safe to say that the Civic Theater has definitely experienced our own fair share of them throughout its history. Last season, we were blessed to have one of our most successful seasons ever with record attendance and the ability to start planning for a brighter future. We invested in new technologies that helped improve the quality of our performances, and we're currently looking at some new things for how our audiences can view theater in ways they've never really seen it done before in the valley. So we're really excited about that. Our board is continuing to structure the organization in a way that will be more efficient and effective for our volunteers involved. From our perspective, we are growing and we are gaining ground towards another peak for this organization. That's what we truly believe. Over the past few years that I've been with the Civic Theater, I've definitely come to realize that this organization is just not a creative outlet for the artistic and imaginative people in our region, but a large community of people who consider this organization to be a family. And throughout those two years, it's been a true pleasure to watch that family grow bigger and bigger and bigger. It's also been a great pleasure to see so many families within the family that support and encourage their children, their siblings, their mother, their father, their aunt, their uncle, their grandparents, in whatever production they so choose. It's really been truly amazing to see. Having an outlet to bridge the gap for those families is something we are very proud of and something we will always encourage for our community. Again, we've been so grateful for the support from everybody over the years, and we will be working hard to continue building a greater theater experience for everyone of all ages for the years ahead. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome.
My name's William Stickler. I live at six twenty-two Crestline Circle Drive. I had one, couple of questions. Is there levy tomorrow? Voting levy? What is this levy on the school districts, this big tax thing for the tax, property taxes that's out there?
I'm not aware. I don't know.
It's on the news, it's on the, it's in the paper, and I wonder what's going on because they're talking about an eighteen-hundred-dollar tax increase on property taxes. Well, you already raised us another three thousand last year. And you want to raise another two thousand, just pushing these people out of their homes. That's all there is to it. You know, these retired people, they can't afford those big increases. And so anyhow, and also back to the city of all this land in the city that's all dried up along the roads, is that the city's property that's on the edge of the road? You have a right of way on each side of the road. Aren't they supposed to take care of that? Isn't there an ordinance against that? You go down Nisper's Drive and look at the grass, it's just high right against the road. Look what happened to Spokane and some of these towns. It don't take nothing for it to go. So I was here two weeks ago and talked about this grass up behind the golf course up on the eleventh green down into Valley Vista. Two days after I was here at this meeting, they had three fires on Briden Canyon on the west side of the road going uphill in different spots. They all happened at the same time. If they would have took it off and came up the canyon, guess what? I wouldn't be here right now because I wouldn't have a house. And neither would all of my other neighbors because that draw comes up through there and all that grass is really high and bad. You know, it has, the landowners, which Nisper's County is the landowner behind me, needs to be taken care of. They need to put in a burn zone around that thing, plow it under so that at least a forty-foot swath around it. Leave it in the middle and it'll burn in the middle. But bite back up to our fences and everything, it's this tall. And I says, we shouldn't have to deal with that. Yeah, we moved in there and everything because it was land for sale and stuff. But still, whoever owns it should take care of their property, and that's what this town doesn't do. They don't take care of their property, they just let the weeds go, and that's all, you know, all there is to it. But, you know, I've heard sayings before, they want to make Lewiston a pretty city. I'll tell you one thing, it sure going downhill fast. You know, between the roads and all the trash and all the junk and people's yards and all the trucks, there's one house up in Yorkshire, he's got fifty cars on his lot. Now, heck and heck, you stand at, what do the neighbors have to pay for? You know, it's just not right. But anyhow, I'd like to see this taken care of, this grass situation, weed, you know, taken care of, because all we need is a deal in Spokane, Chewailla, you know, look at it. A lot of people lost their homes, people lost their lives. Same thing can happen here. It's just shoveled under and never done anything to it, and nobody takes, they used, you go down some of the streets now, and even the blackberry bushes are growing out onto the road, on the main roads. You go up Fourteenth Street there from downtown up to the top where it turns right or left on Stewart, the trees are overhanging, you got to swivel into the other lane, you know. You got a lot of things to take care of. You know, you got people to do that job. Why aren't they doing it? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Andy.
Beg your pardon, Mr. Mayor. Did he say something to me? Oh, welcome. Oh, thank you very much. I felt like I was back in school here. My name is Andrew Hanson from Lewiston, Idaho, and I am here representing your Board of Trustees for the Lewiston Library, and I just want you to know all of the work that has gone into the preparation of the budget that you are considering. I think you're well aware of this beautiful building and facility. I think you are aware that in addition to city dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars of private money and grant funds have been poured in to create a space that is really becoming an iconic and popular destination for our community. The Board of Directors has been impressed at the diligence and discipline exercised by our library director, and once again, we believe our library is in a new and exciting era. My point in standing before you today is just to simply ask that as you consider setting the city's budget, which is no easy task at all, that you strongly review and consider in your review accepting the library budget as presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Further citizen comments? Hearing none, we will move to our consent agenda. Roman numeral five. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the counselor show requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselors? Councilor Towesley?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Towesley, seconded by Councilor Schroeder to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Hearing none, Clerk Brockie?
Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Councilor Towesley?
Aye.
Councilor Forsman?
Aye.
Councilor Schroeder?
Aye.
Councilor Kleber?
Aye.
Councilor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Next, we'll move to Roman numeral six, active agenda, item A, resolution twenty-two-three dash thirty-six, considering appointing Tanya Brockie, a city clerk for the city of Lewiston. This is an action item. Yes? I had. Well, I had a sheet of paper to tell you all the good things I could tell you about Ms. Brockie, and it's not here. Well, that is a darn deal. Is that too strong a language to say a darn deal? All right, well, maybe before I do that, then, in lieu of that, Tanya, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask if you could please come up to the microphone and just introduce yourself to the council, maybe just tell them a couple of things about your preparation for this position, your education and things like that, because that's what I wanted to share with them so they could learn a little bit more about you and they would almost think that you removed it from my packet before I came here, but I'm going to look soon. Please introduce yourself for the record, and you'd be free to introduce your family too, if you'd like.
Oh. See which one to use. This one better? So Mayor, councilors, I'm Tanya Brockie, current deputy city clerk for the city of Lewiston. My mom, Cindy, is here tonight, as well as my husband Dustin and my two sons, Curtis and Felix. I've been with the city of Lewiston for nine years. I started out at the community development department and just kind of worked my way up to where I'm at now. Been the deputy city clerk for the last two years. I'm working on my CMC, which is the certified municipal clerk, just earning points for that, and hopefully I'll earn that in the next year or so. Yeah, I get to work with you guys and all the other staff people. It's been great, a great opportunity, so. Do you need more?
Thank you, Tanya. If you want to just stand there for a second. I'm going to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash thirty-six.
Second.
Second.
Second. We're all seconding.
All right, it's been moved by Mayor Johnson. We'll take the second from Councilor Littkey since you're delayed there a little bit. Councilor Towesley gracefully agreed to that. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Littkey?
I would just like to say that I'm very excited for the city of Lewiston. I've got to see Ms. Brockie's work since my time on planning zoning, and she has shown nothing but an excellent work ethic, an incredible amount of integrity. Her customer service is top-notch. I think that she will bring wonderful things to our city and help us become better as we continue down our path of this municipal government, and so I congratulate her and am in full support.
Thank you, councilors. Further comment? Councilor Forsman?
I just want to second a lot of what Hannah said. Since I've been on council, Tanya's been active on things, always willing to help me out and answer questions, so her customer service is unmatched, and they did go through the interview process with other candidates, and then, and they felt with what she had to offer and all of her experience that she was the best one, and I'm unbelievably so excited for this new set for you, and wish you the best.
Councilor Schroeder?
Yes. Ms. Brockie has been a delight every time I've needed to work with her, and even when I just walk in to pick up my packet, she's got her smile on her face, she's willing to help, she actually helps me with my computer even. So no, I don't know that we can get along without her at this point, and I'm really glad that you are here with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councilors. Others comments? Councilor Kleber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I second everybody else's opinion, but Tanya's been a pleasure to work with, so, thank you.
Councilor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with everybody else. I'm always enjoy working with Tanya, so look forward to it.
Thank you, councilors, and this was not a setup, Tanya, but I did find my notes. So let me just share a couple of things here, just, and part of this is just to let everyone listening know too. Per Idaho Code, chapter, Title fifty, chapter two, and Lewiston City Code two dash thirty-one, all appointed officers, which include the city clerk, shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, and that's why we do this. The position of city clerk is responsible, this is important, the city clerk is responsible for keeping a correct journal of the proceedings of the council and shall have custody of all laws and ordinances of the city. This position may administer oaths and shall also perform such other duties as may be required by ordinance. The city clerk also handles the city's public record requests among other executive assistant duties as assigned. So it's a very important position with the city, and I know that Tanya is very proficient in all the areas required of this position. I have absolute confidence that she will ring a high level of professionalism to the city clerk's office. And so with that, Councilor Towesley, you made the motion, so you can close debate if you'd like, or we will ask for the roll call.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thrilled that the transition has been as smooth as it could be and that we have a great person to continue the important business of city clerk. Thank you for wanting to be there, Tanya. Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. And, Tanya, would you like, did you introduce your husband and kids? And I just missed it while I was looking around.
Yeah, so this is my husband Dustin Brockie, and then my oldest son Curtis, and my youngest Felix.
All right. I also just need to let the council know that this will take effect September one. The ordinance or the resolution says effective upon passage, but it takes effect September one. So with that, I'll have you sit down and you can call for the roll call vote. See how it goes.
Thank you for coming.
Clerk Brockie?
Councilor Littkey?
Aye.
Councilor Towesley?
Aye.
Councilor Forsman?
Aye.
Councilor Schroeder?
Aye.
Councilor Kleber?
Aye.
Councilor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes, and so now we congratulate you for being appointed. Congratulations. Okay, council, next up, we will take under the active agenda, item B, RFP dash twenty-three dash zero-one-three, library materials and services, considering award of RFP dash twenty-three dash zero-one-three to Ingram Library Services LLC for the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. This is an action item. Councilor Schroeder?
Mayor, I move to approve the motion to award RFP twenty-three dash zero-one-three to Ingram Library Services LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the city of Lewiston and Ingram Library Services LLC.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Schroeder, seconded by Councilor Towesley, to award RFP dash twenty-three dash zero-one-three to Ingram Library Services LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the city of Lewiston and Ingram Library Services LLC. Is there discussion? I see we have Director Johnson at the podium, too. Counselors, you have any questions? Councilor Spicklemeyer?
Mayor, Director, I was just curious on this. Is this like an annual purchase group? It kind of looks like a thing you do annually.
We actually have a contract with them currently, and for the most part, we have written those contracts so that they're renewable for up to three years. So we're in our third year. As of October one, we'll need a new contract with a service provider for this.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor.
Mayor?
Councilor Forsman?
It's a silly question, but I'm going to ask it just for the sake of asking it, but I'm assuming, I don't know if there's like, you can go to different people for cost effectiveness or bargaining, but is there anything like that that happens with this?
Yes, Councilor Forsman, thank you for the question. In the actual packet, I believe, that you were provided, or possibly not, there, when we go out to bid, we actually ask each company to disclose their discount rate. So what you may see on the back of a book is not the price we pay. So we often get discounts based on whether it's a hardback, it's a large print item, which we have a large, large print collection, children's materials. We also receive some media through this company, and we receive different rates. It used to be based on our budget amounts that were spent of discounts off the actual retail price of what you would see if you say went to Costco and purchased an item. Thank you.
Good to know. Counselors, if there's no further... Counselors, if there's no further discussion, Clerk Brockie?
Counsel President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleveland?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Motion passes. Next up, we have Item C, under the active agenda, Roman numeral six, Resolution 2023-48, considering adopting the updated city of Lewiston purchasing policy. This is an action item and we have Director Gordon with us tonight. Director, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening at home and online can hear what you have to say. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Amy Gordon, city treasurer. And before you tonight is an amended, an update, a resolution to approve an update to our purchasing policy. First, I would like to commend my staff, specifically Deb Lewis, our financial service manager. She's really the one that did the work on this purchasing policy update. I had little to nothing to do with it, other than read it before it came before you. This, last year, we brought forward our purchasing policy to be updated by this council. And at that time, we had mentioned that we would like to bring this before you each year to do updates to keep our policy up current to state code. So that is some of what this policy does. It also updates some terminology in regard to positions within the purchasing policy. And then it provides an update to our section in our policy regarding information technology. But I believe Deb did a very good job summarizing the changes to the purchasing policy on the council agenda sheet so you would understand what updates are being made tonight.
Thank you, Director. And I will add to that. I, I did go through the changes in the new policy and it's a very well-done policy. So thank you for that. Councilors. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-48.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve Resolution 2023-48. Is her discussion. Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On a lot of these, the first one through four, I can understand. But the five and the six, I think, you know, if there's any efforts to kind of tighten or strengthen the city's budget, you start with controlling spending. And I don't think loosening requirements and increasing spending limits will help with that. So I won't be supporting at least the addition of five and six.
Thank you, counselor. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Littkey?
Part of the document that Counselor Spickelmeier is referencing, was having a hard time piecing together the increases that were implemented in the draft. And I was going to ask if you or legal could tell us the updated state law as far as those amounts.
Thank you, Counselor. Well, I'll just, I'll do my best here, kind of a back-up the napkin effort. But yes, there were changes this past legislative session to increase the authority under which the mayor and/or the directors could make purchases of services, but not all services of personal property. And so item number five there references Title 67, Chapter 28, and the changes that were made in July of 2023. And in number six there, the increase it says is made for goods and services to align with new thresholds. However, there are some differences between these two parts of the purchasing policy. It's not the same depending on if it's professional services or goods and services or products that you're purchasing. But the way that I read this, and I think the way that the legislature looked at this was that as things become more and more expensive, you, your ability to purchase items kind of decreases the purchasing power. So what we used to be able to get, let's say we could purchase 10 items for this price previously. Now we can only get six. And so to purchase the additional four, we would have to bring that decision back to council and have them approve it. So it adds to the workload that we have to do. So I'm sure this was very carefully thought out and planned and it wasn't opened up to all purchases. So that's my understanding of the legislation and why it was brought forward. If there are any other questions, I could try to answer them. That's my understanding of the statute.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
Sorry, you were saying as far as the workload, do we, so would we need more man-hours going to this purchasing if we didn't change, make the change? Like, do we have to have more staff on something if we didn't make this change? Is this going to save tax staff time? So that maybe you guys can focus on other things? Does that make sense?
It does. I believe, you know, the mayor did a really good job responding to Counselor Littkey's question because I think what the, the update that the state code did was to keep purchasing thresholds kind of up to date with the cost, the inflationary cost of supplies and materials. They've gone up significantly. So the increase in those thresholds just allows that we can continue to provide services in a time-efficient manner. The, this would limit the number of items that would run through the purchasing office. So we've seen those costs of goods and services go up. So now what's happening is more items are having to go through procurement that maybe otherwise didn't. You know, chemicals is a really good example. The price of chemicals has doubled this last year. So we almost have to be prepared for formal procurement every time we're looking at chemicals. So this would just help lessen the amount of procurement processes that would come to the purchasing office, but then also allow staff to provide those services timely and efficiently. Thank you.
Council, further questions? Comments? Clerk Brockie?
Counsel President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Cleveland?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors and Director Gordon. Next up, council, we have, under the active agenda, Roman numeral six, Item E ordinances. Number one, second and third readings, A, Ordinance 4893, considering implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 23-5, declaring that certain real property be removed from the agricultural transitional F2 zone and included in the regional commercial C6 zone and amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston. This is an action item.
Mayor?
Mayor? I'm sorry.
I believe you missed an item. Item D, staff information?
Did I do that? I'm getting ahead of myself. Well, I will withdraw everything I just said and maybe I'll put the pen down here. I'm in a hurry tonight. My apologies, council. Item D, staff information regarding potential budget amendments. Thank you for your patience, Director. Receiving information from staff regarding potential budget amendments per city council's request on August 21, 2023. We're going to have a short presentation from our finance director, Amy Gordon. Again, Director, if you'd introduce yourself for the record and speak loudly, clearly, and maybe slowly, so everyone can hear what you have to say and understand it as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Amy Gordon, city treasurer. I didn't bring my copy of the agenda up here with me, so I thought maybe I was out of order. So last week, I received a homework assignment to come back and do a presentation or show council what a 2.5% reduction to our tax base would look like. So I have here before you on this slide, in the very first column where it says proposed budget 2024, that is how we propose the budget to council. So if we look under total property tax levy, you'll see a figure of 23.4 million. Council has since amended the tax certification as well as the appropriation ordinance, which is showcased in the middle column. That did not change the total tax levy, but it just shifted the dollars around. We moved the 1.6 million from the building reserve fund to streets capital. The third column shows what a 2.5% reduction to the tax levy would look like. It would be a $590,000 reduction to our tax levy. So now I've added a fourth column, which is the start of my recommendation for council. One item that we did not get updated in our budget prior to receiving the L2 form was this year, the state updated the exemption amounts for personal property tax. So then, when there is an exemption on personal property, those property taxes are then funded by the state rather than our local taxpayers. So my first recommendation for council would be to update that amount so that it will naturally just lower your tax levy. Regardless of what council does tonight, I would ask that you do make this amendment because this will clean up that clerical issue with the L2 form. And that would also reduce what we are funding our budget from our local tax levy by $88,000. So that would be my very first recommendation.
Director, can I interrupt for just a second? And I apologize, but I didn't want to assume that everyone sitting up here, including myself and those listening at home or in the audience, understand what those business personal property tax replacement dollars are. So could you just tell us very quickly what personal property taxes mean? What are we talking about?
So personal property tax would be equipment that is used by businesses. It could be manufactured homes that there is property that's not attached to real estate. And the state of Idaho provides an exemption, so they're, you're exempt up to a certain dollar amount. So construction equipment, agricultural equipment. When the state provides that exemption, they then supplant those taxes directly from the state rather than the local taxpayers.
So the tax, Idaho State Tax Commission, I think, calculates that and remits that back to the jurisdiction. So it could be the dentist chair that you're sitting in, anything like that. So it's a very important part of business, but we benefit by that as local taxpayers.
Correct.
Counselor?
Is that like personal property, like homeowners involved? Sorry if I missed that.
No, it would not be tied to real estate. Thank you. So then I have some expense reductions that council could consider, amending the budget to remove, reduce these expenses from the budget. Last week, council did not approve their pay increases, so you could reduce the budget by that amount. The, we could remove the funding for the deputy city clerk position. At this time, we don't have plans to fill that position right away. So I think the executive office wants to take some time to determine what the needs of that position would be. In the meantime, my department, the finance department, human resources, legal department, we can look for areas where we could provide backup and support when our deputy or city clerk is out of the office. The sole lease defibrillator, that is an item that probably should have been removed from the budget before we proposed it. We just missed it. It's a, we had a lease that got paid off last year that was, that allowed the fire department to replace all their defibrillators at one time. That lease came to an end. We established a public safety equipment reserve in this year's budget. So those dollars would then be available to fire or police to help them with their larger equipment purchases. And then I just really needed to come up with another $4,500. And to be honest with you, fire salaries was a great place to, it was an easy place for me to take it because we have a vacant fire chief position. And I don't think that even if we did interview tomorrow, we'd have that filled by the first of the year. And the reason why...
Counselor Forsman?
Oh, I'll let her finish. I'm sorry.
And the reason why I needed, when I say I needed just another $4,500 to get to the 2.5%, that will come with the next, the next part of my recommendation.
Counselor Forsman?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I went down a little bit. So with the fire salary that you have out, the fire chief, even if we filled it and then the next following year, so it's not going to affect obviously paying that person or getting that position filled by any means?
No, when we built the budget, it was billed off on assumption. And so I, we have room there.
Thank you.
So if council were to proceed with this recommendation, if council were to want to reduce these expenses from the budget, it would require a amendment to your tax certification ordinance. In addition, it will also require an amendment to the appropriations ordinance. So on this slide, I've provided the language to reduce that tax levy. So this recommendation number two, I need to clarify, this includes the first recommendation to capture the full amount of the personal property tax replacements and to reduce your levy by that amount. And it captures those expense reductions. So if you were wanting to amend, update the personal property tax dollar amount and incorporate these expense reductions, this is what the amendment to your tax certification ordinance would look like. This would be the language you would use. And then this is how the appropriations ordinance would need to be amended as well. And I'll just add, I did provide the mayor copies of these recommendations and language. So if anyone needed to revisit this, it's available, I believe, up there with you. And I have a copy here as well. So then the third layer of my presentation tonight would be, council could also choose to fund, so within the budget, we had several one-time funding requests that I was preparing to fund from revenue versus reserves. Council could choose to fund those from reserves rather than revenues. We have about $414,000 in the current budget that we were using revenues to fund rather than reserves. I will tell you, when I wrote the budget, I strategically wrote it funding these items from revenues because I was trying to do two things. One, I was able to get this written with a 0% tax increase with no increase to taxes. Having these items funded by revenue would help us potentially have three years of a 0% tax increase. So my concern with this portion of the recommendation is if you reduce it this year, you're going to just have to increase it back up next year. One of the, the other reason why I was offsetting these one-time funding requests with revenues rather than reserves is it also helps build a layer of protection should our interest rates drop. Because this year, as you know, we've benefited greatly from increased, an increased rate market. We captured, we were conservative on what we captured in the current year budget to fund that. But if for some reason those rates were just dropped significantly, this would help provide you some protection from that when we're building out 25 budget year, budget. In addition, I don't know how, we've gone two years without a, 2023, we had a 0% budget increase. But when we started with the 2023 budget, we, that was the second year of a two-year budget. So we had already built, in preliminary, built a budget that was predicated on the first year budget, which had a tax increase in it. And in order to get that tax increase out of that budget and be able to present to you for adoption a budget without a tax increase to it, the mayor gave city directors a directive to reduce their budget. So the budget that council approved for fiscal year 23... So the budget that council approved for fiscal year '23 had budget reductions in it because we were shaving a 3% tax levy down to a 0% tax levy. And then this year, we were able to present to council another budget with a 0% tax increase. So although this might not look like a budget reduction, in one sense it is because departments are having to pay for these supplies and materials that have inflated significantly over the two years on the same budget they had two years ago. So, you know, I don't know what will happen next year, but I do know we will potentially have inflationary costs that are outside of our control. Percy's looking at a rate increase next July. We have, we've had two years of no health insurance increases. A third year would be pretty remarkable if that were to happen three years in a row. I would expect there to be some kind of rate increase. So this is kind of that, the area that we have in the budget that would help reduce what kind of a tax increase that we would be looking at in that third year is we could go to these, this area here to cover some of those inflationary costs. So this is definitely up for council tonight. They could make this amendment to fund these from reserves. But I feel like that's just going to make it so we have to come back and ask for those taxes back next year. And this, having the budget, funding these items from revenue helps us potentially get to maybe three years without a tax increase. Or maybe that third year, just having a slightly or moderate tax increase. So I wanted to also show council what, if we were to fund that $414,000 from reserves, what that would look like to the reserve picture. So we had originally about 1.8 million, I believe, being funded from reserves. There at the very bottom of the column on the left is, you just see a line item that says additional items. Those are the items from the previous slide that you could choose to fund from reserves versus revenue. So that would take us to, using 27 days of reserves in the current year budget, we would, I'm sorry, in the 2024 budget. So if we were to use 2.2 million of reserves in the fiscal year 2024 budget, we would still be left with over 120 days of reserves. So there's definitely reserves available in the budget that you could fund with these items. It's just what it will do to the tax levy picture next year.
Counselor Forstman?
What are the recommended amounts in the reserves that they, I know there's a recommended amount, but I'm spacing it right now.
The best practice is 90 days. So we do have, we do have healthy reserves. But we always want to be careful what we use reserves to fund because if we're funding something ongoing with those reserves, then we're going to potentially get ourselves into some trouble there.
And the, the two ordinances that you brought for, the one where the cut, like the fire salary and everything, if we did, are those all three together or are those separate actions we could have taken? Sorry for misunderstanding.
So council could choose to take them separately, or you could look at combining them. Let me just back up here. So this recommendation number two, this incorporates the first recommendation and the second recommendation. I did that because, one, I would really actually like for you to make the first amendment I presented to you. So the number two has both the first and the second. And then this recommendation three would encompass all three.
And that was the 400,000 one?
Yes, that would be funding the one-time funding request from reserves versus revenue, which would then allow you to drop your property tax levy amount. So this recommendation number three would require an amendment to just your tax certification ordinance. But if you were going to keep the, so this one here has all three.
Yeah.
So it has the, to fix the personal property tax replacement amount, to reduce the 88,000 of funding or expenses, excuse me, and then also the 414,000 of one-time funding. The third item I put before you, funding the expenses from reserves versus revenues, would not require an amendment to the appropriations because we're just changing what dollars are paying for those expenses. But I do have this up here because the second item I presented to you. This is just a replication of that.
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. Actually, for whatever reason, I cannot read that. I can read a little bit in the box, but the rest of it, and most of what you put out there, I can't read. So when you're talking about paying it with revenues rather than reserves, what were you talking about for, with revenue?
So the, I have a list of one-time funding requests in here, and I won't read through all of them, but they are capital in nature. So we fund them one time and then they can come out of the budget. And right now, we just have revenues of the general fund. We haven't, you know, we don't point directly to specific revenues are going to fund this item and this specific revenue is going to fund this item. But if we were to decide to, rather than funding these from revenue, we're going to fund them from reserves and a revenue that we have the ability to reduce is the property taxes.
Follow up?
Not really, but...
Counselor Charlesley?
Director Gordon, in your crystal ball, do you see property taxes assessed by the county going down next year? Do you have any kind of sense of it?
I mean, I couldn't make a prediction. You know, last year, the city did not increase our property taxes and the county didn't increase their property taxes. But what we didn't know or predict was how much homeowner values went up compared to commercial. So what that did, you have this, you know, pie of everybody who pays property taxes that's divided between residential property taxpayers and commercial property taxpayers. Because residential values went up so significantly compared to commercial values, residential taxpayers paid more for the tax burden than commercial. So that's what drove the increase in property taxes. I mean, I keep an eye on the residential market. And you see tax, you'll see, start to see price cuts on home values, but they're still being listed at a high rate. I think our, the inventory seems to still be kind of limited. So I, I don't know. I don't have that answer. That's kind of the unknown that we, we don't know when we put together our tax certification. We know the amount we need and we can calculate the levy rate. But what we don't know is that total picture and how much that shift has happened.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a sense that the real estate market is slowing down. If, if it is at all, it might be because of the property taxes that are, when people are looking at the final cost that they're going to be paying per month within the city. So I, it's a tough one. It is. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Litke?
Thank you. Sorry, Amy. First of all, just thank you for doing this work just close to certification time and really liked pictures that you've given us. I want to go back to the conversation about insurance because I think that is more of a concern for me. Just in the industry I'm in, most employers saw anywhere from 6.5% to 9.5% increases in their insurance costs this last year. And it is very unprecedented that the city did not experience that. So for me, that's one of the bigger costs that we would, could incur and most likely will, maybe not quite at that percentage. But can you kind of paint a picture of what that would look like? Because I know our benefit packages are, are good. And so part of that 33 million that goes to wage and benefits, that's a big part of that is benefits, if I'm not mistaken. And so can you, I know those numbers aren't right in front of you, but could you give just, you know, if, say we had a 5% increase next year, what would that look like?
I think I've been a, I think 1% increase in our premium, the cost to the city ends up being approximately between $40,000 and $50,000. Is that correct? Thank you. So if we had, you know, a 5% increase to our health insurance premiums, it would have an impact of $250,000 to the city. Another thing to comment on is commercial. We knew going into this early, during the current year, we, during our renewal this past year, we were warned to expect a significant rate increase. So our commercial package has a 20% rate increase in the 2024 budget. And I don't see insurance rates coming down. In fact, I see them going up.
I would have to agree. Just one more follow-up if I may. If we were to move those monies from reserves and cover those instead of use and then actually drop the budget, that would take us to essentially just over 120 days, which would give us a cushion of, let's say, 34, 35 days. And I, and I understand the, the desire to stay a little bit above that, especially in the situations that we have been in with, you know, different repairs needing to be made. But I guess my question is, if we were to go in this direction, one way that we could refund those reserves is really to take a hard look at those unused properties and get them back on our tax rolls, all, if we were to sell them to private ownership. That would do a couple of things by bringing us one-time influx of cash, but also a long-term addition to our tax rolls and really help us spread it out. I assume most of those lands would be considered commercial, zoning.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the zoning would be on the properties if we were to sell any of the city properties, but I can say that yes, those are currently exempt from property taxes. So if they were sold, they would go back on the tax roll. I believe they'd have to be sold and transferred prior to January 1st because I think it's January 1st of every year that sets taxable properties. But I don't know if there was more to that question. I apologize.
No, thank you. I'm just thinking out loud. So no, you answered it just fine. Thank you.
Well, and one thing, another thing I did as I, I ran both, all, I ran the scenario through the L2 form. So as we proposed it, I'd already had the L2 form drafted for that. And then I ran it through the scenario of reducing that tax levy by 590,000 so you guys can see the levy rates. But before I do that, I'll show you this last slide. So the, if you were to incorporate all three of those recommendations, you would be reducing your current tax base by the 501,000. You would be replacing current tax base dollars by the 88,000. And that would get you to the $590,000 reduction to a 2025 tax base compared to what we started with in the 2024 tax base. And so the levy rate on the $23.4 million tax rate is .0063. On the 22.8 tax base, it would be .0061, almost 6.2. That would be an annual savings of $13.60 per 100,000 of taxable value. So I did a scenario on a $400,000 home, which would, as the budget is proposed, $400,000 home would have $1,740 of property taxes for city property taxes only. And then with the 590,000 reduction, it would change the levy rate to the .0061, which would be an annual property taxes of $1,703. So reducing the tax base 590,000 would save $13.60 per 100,000 of taxable property. On a $400,000 home, it would be an annual savings of $37.
I was about to ask that. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I was about to ask that.
So I'll just kind of, well, I won't do it by making you look at all these slides again. I have these available if anyone needs to see them when you're going through the final reading of the ordinance tonight. But there's three areas. One, I would ask council to do this, is to update that personal property tax replacement amount from where it's currently at to the new amount. That will, naturally, we can just lower the tax certification amount. The second item or some areas we identified that you could remove spending, reduce the expenses. That's up to council to decide. And then the third is you could fund one-time funding requests from reserves rather than revenues. So I built those recommendations. Recommendation number one would take care of the personal property tax replacement amount. Recommendation number two would take care of the personal property tax amount and reduce spending by 88,000. Recommendation number three would take care of what was in recommendation number two plus shift the funding of 414,000 from property taxes to reserves.
Counselor Forstman?
Can we go to two, please?
Do you want to see the expenses?
Yeah.
So that would be to reduce expenses by 88,000. Part of that is removing the funding for one of our city, one of our full-time positions. It would require the amendment to the tax certification ordinance. And this particular recommendation would also require an amendment to the appropriations ordinance.
Counselor Forstman?
And that one staffing, we have not decided if we wanted to fill that though at this current time, correct?
Yeah, it's currently vacant. There have, there's no current recruitment. And I, you know, I did talk with Clerk Brockie prior to making this recommendation to council. I also spoke to the mayor. And I think the plan is to take some time and assess what that position would look like, what the duties would look like, and to see if there were opportunities within City Hall where we could provide support from other divisions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
A motion?
This is just a presentation, Counselor. Any further questions? Oh, I did want to fall out, Director. In the slide, you showed about 127 days of reserve left or something like that. And, you know, it might appear that we're keeping, we're building our reserves excessively high. But I think part of the explanation for that high reserves is the fact that Director Gordon did a very good job in her finance team investing our idle monies or our operating funds. And the markets changed, you know, everyone knows interest rates went up last year. And we took full advantage of that, and it was a windfall for the city, to be very honest about it. And so in part, I think that's why it's advantageous that the director's telling us to look at funding some of these items one way or another. But I think we're going to continue to have high reserves maybe into this next year because it doesn't look like the rates are going down anytime soon. So that's just a windfall for the city. And, you know, we'll be able to bring that back to you again next year, but that's my prediction.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. When we wrote the 2023 budget, we were just starting to put some of those investment tools in place with the bank. And rates were just, you know, had just started coming up a few months prior to that. So the 23... So the 23 budget, we didn't know how high rates would go. And so we didn't capture the amount that we've actually collected in interest income in that budget. So then when we wrote the budget originally, we thought we would spend upwards to 23 days of cash on hands to fund the 2023 budget. But because we have collected quite a bit more than anticipated in investment income, that's helped lower that number of cash on, days cash on hand we're using in our, where we believe will come out at the end of the year.
Good problem to have. Okay, thank you, Director. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, councilors, we will now move to Agenda Item 6E, ordinances. Number one, second and third readings. A, Ordinance 4893, considering implementing the City Council's decision in C N C 23-5, declaring that certain real property be removed from the agricultural transitional F2 zone and include it in the regional commercial C6 zone and amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston. This is an action item. Councilors.
Counselor Schroeder.
I move to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4893.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forssman, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4893. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All but motions.
Counselor Schroder.
I'll speak louder. I realized I wasn't speaking very loud before. I'm sorry. Motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4893.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Litke to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4893. Is there any discussion or amendments? Okay, hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Clerk Brockie.
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance number 4893, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the City Council's decision in Z N C 23-5, declaring that certain real property be removed from the agricultural transitional F2 zone to the regional commercial C6 zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk. Next up, counsel, we have item number two, third readings. A, Ordinance 4892, considering amending Ordinance 4858, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho in the sum of $25,521,810. This is an action item. Counselor Townsley.
I'll make the motion to waive the third reading in full ordinance in full of ordinance number 4892.
It's been moved by Counselor Townsley, seconded by Counselor Schroder, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4892. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I'm gonna. Counselor Litke, how did you vote on that? I need four votes on this.
I voted aye.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion passes. Next, we have a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance number 4892. Action item. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the third reading of ordinance number 4892.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Townsley to approve the third reading of ordinance number 4892. Is there discussion? Discussion or amendments? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Clerk Brockie.
Approving the third reading of ordinance number 4892, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending ordinance number 4858, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city of Lewiston, Idaho in the sum of $25,521,810 and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counselors, next up, we have item 2B, Ordinance 4894, to be termed the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, considering appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024. This is an action item. Counselors. Counselor Schroder.
Motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4894.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Kleber to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4894. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve the third reading of ordinance number 4894.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Townsley to approve the third reading of ordinance number 4894. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Litke.
I just want to clarify that this is the ordinance that we need to, no matter what the change of the purple, excuse me, personal property tax reduction of the 88,000 adjustment.
This is your budget, yes, Counselor.
I missed the number, so I'd need that pulled up so that I could make that amendment. I tried to get a screenshot but missed it of the, that adjustment. So maybe I'm not the person to make the motion.
Director Gordon can help us out here, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Townsley.
Yeah, I'd like to make the amendment to to adjust this to use recommendation number two as outlined by Director Gordon with the amount of, it was 88,000. Going to fill this in. Oh, I don't have this.
Yeah, I know. I'd love to have those.
So the amend the ordinance 4895 to decrease the tax certification amount from $23,476,970 to $23,308,000, reducing the amount of general fund levy from $16,389,290 to $16,213,120, and increase the amount of personal property tax replacement funds from $298,767 to $387,140.
Counselors, you have a motion. We can discuss it if we get a second, otherwise.
I seconded it.
You seconded?
I'm sorry, it wasn't quite enough. Yes.
All right.
Where did you read from?
Let me restate the motion and then we can ask questions, councilors. It has been seconded. The motion was to amend ordinance number 4895 to decrease the tax certification amount from $23,476,970 to $23,308,000, reducing the amount to general fund levy from $16,389,290 to $16,213,120 and increase the amount to personal property tax replacement from funds from $298,767 to $387,140. And it's been seconded. Director Gordon, would you like to help us?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one correction. The, there was one amount stated incorrectly. The motion would need to be to decrease the tax certification amount to $23,388,720.
In recommendation two.
Yeah, we're on one. Can we go to two, slide two? Oh, that was trying to say.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that.
Let me, I'm gonna phone.
You stated it correctly. I was like, oh.
I'm gonna phone a friend here because we got to get this right.
Am I the friend?
You're the friend.
Great, okay. Kayla Herman, City Attorney. Counselor Townsley, your motion was in regards to the tax certification, which is the next item on the agenda. Right now, we are under ordinance 4894, the 2024 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. So I believe your intent would be to amend the language to ordinance 4894, which is on recommendation number two, continued, the next slide. Does that help?
Director Gordon. If we could, face again.
Yeah, if the, this would, we just at this time would want the, if you were wanting to incorporate recommend, sorry, recommendation number one and recommendation number two, it would require an amendment to the appropriations ordinance. And I can help you with that amendment language if you would like.
I would love that.
Of the.
Is that, is this the appropriate time to do that, then?
Yes, I would just recommend possibly withdrawing your motion. And that would potentially be appropriate on the next agenda.
I realize that there's no money amount in that, so yeah.
I'll withdraw in a second.
Thank you. Worth every penny.
It's worth more than that.
At least.
Yes.
Counselor Kleber.
We are, in fact, dealing with ordinance 4894, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I think both these got kind of melded in together, so.
Yeah. I was confused.
Okay. So are we? Scookum? Director Gordon, are you comfortable with the motion?
Mayor Kayla Herman, City Attorney, I think counsel would need to make a new motion outlining recommendation number two for ordinance 4894, if that's what's proposed. And I would recommend reading it if you have it in front of you.
I will in a second. I didn't get it.
No, but that's okay.
We finished voting 4894.
No, there is currently a motion on the table to approve the third reading. So now would be the time for any separate amendments.
Director Gordon.
I'm just going to stand by in case you need some assistance with any of your amendments.
Can we get some clarity here? So within he makes the recommendation number one and then the continued at the next reading? I think that's what we're.
Number two, and then the continued number two?
Altogether. Yeah, I got it.
They're both two, aren't they?
No, well, there's a recommendation two and then a continued two.
Yeah.
Correct. The, we're currently on the appropriations ordinance. So if you were going to incorporate recommend, recommendation number two, you would need to start with the slide that says continued.
That's what I thought.
So now I could make my amendment. I love learning. It's painful sometimes. I would make the recommendation, the amendment for recommendation number two, which would amend the ordinance number 4894 to update legislative appropriations to $1,051,270, executive appropriations to $459,790, fire appropriations to $9,877,700, total general fund to $38,526,680, total government funds to $52,289,750, the subtotal to $107,305,020, and the grand total to $101,484,830.
Okay.
I didn't know if you want to read back over.
So Director, we have the question on the table. It's been moved to second it. And at this time, it would be appropriate to entertain amendments.
That would be correct. You could vote on the amendment before you.
Okay, I think that's what we discussed. So, councilors, if you have questions, please ask them. Let's make sure everybody's understanding what we're voting on and where we're at. So I'm not going to pretend like I kept everything straight in my mind either, but here we are. So are there any questions? Okay, are there any amendments?
Other than the one that was made, correct? We're voting on that amendment.
That was.
Yeah, there's a current amendment that Counselor Townsley just made.
Which was option two.
It was option two.
Okay.
But just to, I guess, stay over, what we were just, made the amendment on is to move that $88,000, cut back on that, and then my brain.
Do you need this?
Yeah. So everybody understands, I guess, what page we're, the 88,000 that we put on the slide before to cut back into the budget there and then and keep, we're not moving it, yeah. So, oh, and then the appropriation. less on the tax levy for the, for the businesses. Personal property tax.
So to update the personal property tax replacement amount would be part of the tax certification ordinance and not the appropriations ordinance.
Okay, this is just.
We're currently on the appropriations ordinance.
Which is to just cut back, basically, the eighty-eight. That's what I thought.
Hey, Counselor, if there's no further discussion or amendments, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Clerk Rocky?
Go back to and vote on the main motion to approve the third reading of ordinance forty-eight ninety-four.
Well, I admit that I didn't hear that then. Okay, so that was just the amendment, but the number two, it passed, and so now we're gonna go back to the main motion.
Well, Mayor.
Counselor?
I, I didn't hear Spicklemeyer, nor did I hear Hannah. I don't know how they voted. I haven't actually heard from Hannah. I don't know if she's on.
I voted aye.
Okay.
Okay, back to the main motion, Counselors. If there's no further discussion or amendments, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Clerk Rocky?
Approving the third reading of ordinance number forty-eight ninety-four, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston to be termed the twenty-twenty-four annual appropriation ordinance, appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the City of Lewiston, Idaho, for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-four, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have item C, ordinance forty-eight ninety-five, considering fixing establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the City of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October first, twenty-twenty-three, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-four, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification of the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, in the amount of, I have some help with that number to confirm it?
Twenty-three million four hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred seventy dollars.
Nine hundred what?
Seventy.
Nine seventy?
Nine seventy.
Thank you. In the amount of twenty-three million four hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred seventy, okay, providing a certified copy of the twenty-twenty-four annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, as adopted by the City of Lewiston for the twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-four fiscal year, this is an action item. Counselors? Counselor Kleber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got a question. The number I came up with was, I think we were given that was twenty, well, I don't have the full number, but twenty-three million three hundred eighty-eight and some change.
It has to be amended before that number changes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Littkey?
I would move to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number four-eight-nine-five.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Littkey, seconded by Counselor Kleber, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five. Is there discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
I said nay.
Yes, good night. Motion passes. Counselor Littkey?
I would also move to approve the third reading of ordinance number four-eight-nine-five.
I have a question.
We need a second, Counselor.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Littkey, seconded by Counselor Towesley to approve the third reading of ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five. Counselor Towesley?
Do we need to re-enter the numbers of recommendation number two into that for forty-eight ninety-five? I'm phoning your friend.
Bad amount.
Kayla?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. So you currently have on the table a motion to approve the third reading, and yes, you're correct, in order to carry forward that recommendation number two, the Counselor would need to make a separate motion to amend and then read that language from recommendation number two to amend the tax certification ordinance. And then there would be a vote on that amendment, and then you would be back up to your original motion to approve the third reading.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd make an amendment?
Counselor Towesley?
To amend ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five, ah, I see, to decrease the tax certification amount from twenty-three million four hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred seventy dollars to twenty-three million three hundred thousand eight hundred dollars, reducing the amount of general fund levy from sixteen million three hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred ninety dollars to sixteen million two hundred thirteen thousand one hundred twenty dollars, and increase the amount of personal property tax replacement funds from two hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars to three hundred eighty-seven, and fourteen, eighty-two, three hundred eighty-seven thousand fourteen dollars.
Second. Or do we need a second?
I'm gonna need to copy that, Counselor. It's been moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to amend ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five to decrease the tax certification amount from twenty-three million four hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred seventy dollars to twenty-three million three hundred thousand eight hundred dollars, reducing the amount of general fund levy from sixteen million three hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred ninety dollars to sixteen million two hundred thirteen thousand one hundred twenty dollars, and increase the amount of personal property tax replacement funds from two hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars to three hundred eighty-seven thousand fourteen dollars. Oops, pardon me. Is there discussion? On that, lots of smiles up here. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, is amended. Counselor? Littkey?
Aye.
Counselors, I would entertain a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five. As amended.
We already have that ordinance on the table, Mayor. I believe it was moved by Council President Littkey and seconded by Counselor Towesley. So if there's no other amendments, that one would be ready for a vote.
Well, I think we just voted on it, but those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Once again. Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the third reading of ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the City of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-three, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-four, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, in the amount of twenty-three million three hundred thousand eight hundred dollars, providing a certified copy of the twenty-twenty-four annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Mesper's County, Idaho, as adopted by the City of Lewiston for the twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four fiscal year and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, item three, adoption approval of ordinance summaries. Item A, ordinance forty-eight ninety-three, this is an action item.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Towesley?
Make the motion to adopt ordinance number forty-eight ninety-three and approve the related ordinance summary.
Second. Second.
Do you mind? Moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Littkey, to adopt ordinance number forty-eight ninety-three and approve the related ordinance summaries. Is there discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, item number four, adoption. Item A, ordinance forty-eight ninety-two, B, ordinance number forty-eight ninety-four, C, ordinance number forty-eight ninety-five. Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. Motion to adopt numbers four-eight-nine-two, four-eight-nine-four, and four-eight-nine-five.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to adopt ordinance numbers forty-eight ninety-two, forty-eight ninety-four, and forty-eight ninety-five. Is there discussion? Clerk Rocky?
Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, we have item F, recent statement, C N C twenty-three dash five, considering approval of the recent statement of relevant criteria standards for C N C twenty-three dash five. This is an action item. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve the recent statement for the N C two-three dash five.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Towesley, to approve the recent statement for C N C twenty-three dash five. Is there any discussion or amendments? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, Roman numeral seven, public hearings and related action items. Item A, public hearing on foregone taxes, accepting testimony on the consideration of accruing foregone tax, which increases the amount of property tax the council elects to not levy for amounts that are less than the three percent increase as permitted for the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year pursuant to Idaho Code sixty-three dash eight-zero-two sub-one-F. Counselors, I will open the public hearing on this. We'll have a staff presentation from Director Gordon, and we will invite and accept testimony from the public if there is any counsel questions, if you have questions after the presentation, and then I will close the public hearing. So with that, I will open the public hearing on foregone taxes and turn the floor over to Director Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So, before you tonight for approval as a resolution to reserve in foregone taxes, seven hundred eight thousand two hundred and four dollars, I'll use this slide from earlier tonight. If we had built into that proposed budget a three percent tax increase, right there below, well, let's look at the third column where it shows that five hundred ninety thousand decrease, if this was built to have a three percent increase in it, you would see, in that area that's highlighted in yellow, you would see the figure seven hundred eight thousand, um, two hundred and four dollars. So each year, City Council can increase the property tax base by three percent. That is what state law allows, is a three percent increase. Should council choose not to take that increase or to take only a portion of that increase, the amount that they did not take, council can then decide to reserve that amount to be taken in a subsequent or later year from their foregone tax bank. So this would add those, this resolution would add seven hundred eight thousand to your foregone tax that you have in reserve with the State of Idaho to support a future budget.
Counselor Forsman?
Just as a reminder, how much currently stands in there now?
Well, I left that number sitting over on my desk over there, but it's just under three million. I think we're two point nine some million.
Thank you.
And I will remind counsel, there's been quite a bit of changes on foregone taxes in recent years. It used to be that counsel could, they could take that entire amount out of their foregone tax base. There are now thresholds on that. You can only take up to one percent to support maintenance and operations. So you, if you were to levy that one percent, it would then stay in your tax base for future years. And then you can increase your levy three percent for capital needs. It comes out of your foregone bank the year that that is built into your budget, and then once your, and then it goes away. So it's no longer your foregone tax bank, and then it's gone to support your capital project and no longer stays in your tax base.
Counselor Forsman?
Sorry, is that, so is that a one-time increase for taxpayers on their property tax, or am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, so the way the foregone taxes work is in addition to, if you were going to take money out of your foregone ba, um, tax bank, so council would most likely be adopting a budget that had a three percent tax increase in it, and then they would need additional property taxes to support their budget. So if it was to support maintenance and operation, you could actually build your budget with a four percent tax increase. The one percent would come out of your foregone bank. So your, that foregone tax bank would go down by the equivalent of a one percent, and then it would be part of your tax base for the current year and then the ongoing, the subsequent year. If you needed to have additional property taxes to support a capital improvement, you could take your three percent tax increase that law allows. You could add an additional three percent that would come from your foregone tax bank. It would pay for your capital project. It would no longer be part of your tax base for future years, and it would no longer be in your foregone tax bank.
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. How long do you have to spend that? If you, you're saying if, like, if we took the three percent for capital, does it have to be used in that one year?
It doesn't have to be spent in that year, but it would be part of your tax base for that year, and it would not carry into your tax base for next year. So if your project didn't get completed that year, you would have received the taxes. It would be part of your reserve balance, and you would just carry forward your project. Thank you.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Mayor, so, Director, then, you mentioned that using it for a capital project, are there really specific regulations on what you can use it for and when?
It does state in the code. It gives some description on what it can be used. I will say, if you take it for capital, and then you don't end up certifying to the State Tax Commission that you spent that money on that capital project and completed it, they're going to take it out of your tax base. They'll make certain to come back and make you repay it. The, let's see if I can find that in here. So in regards to levying it for capital projects. So in regards to levying it for capital projects, I just read it today. I know it's in here. Just can't find the language for it. It's very similar to what we have in... Oh, here it is. The construction, expansion, renovation, or replacement of public facilities, including the acquisition of land and other site improvements for the construction, expansion, or reconstruction of public work improvements, including roads, bridges, water systems, sewer systems, and broadband systems, and for the purchase of equipment with a useful life of 10 years or more.
Mayor.
Councillor Forsman.
Sorry, I'm not... I want to make sure this is clear. We hold that 3% even for a capital project, though. There would be an increase in homeowners' property taxes for that time.
Yes, there would be.
Thank you.
Yes, if you had a budget that was built on your, taking your 3% that you're allowed, plus an additional 3%, that would be a 6% increase in your tax levy for that year.
Yeah.
The 3% would drop out of your tax base, but... So for the next year. But in that one year, their taxes would go up based off a 3% increase in the levy, plus the additional 3% for capital.
I'm just... Mayor, sorry, follow up. The amount that is already in there cannot, we can't do anything with it other than spend it. Like, we can't return it or get rid of it.
I think the only way to reduce what's in your foregone tax bank is by levying it and utilizing it in your budget.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Forsman.
So we have an option then at this current time to not levy this, so not hold it and put it away. And then we would just let it go, basically, if we chose to do that route.
Yeah, so council, they can choose to approve the resolution as it was drafted, which has the full amount that's available to council to reserve. You can reduce the amount, or you could choose not to reserve anything.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you. So Director, did you say that there is actually in... We have a balance of foregone taxes?
We currently have registered with the State Tax Commission. Taxes in our foregone balance, it's approximately 2.9 million. So that's an accumulation of tax increases that were not taken in a given budget year. So they've accumulated into this foregone balance.
Motion.
Councillor Forsman.
I don't have any paperwork in front of me, so I'm going to have to... Oh, not yet.
Thank you, directors. Any comments from the public tonight about foregone taxes? Okay, Councillor Litkey, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, just an opinion, so I will hold it to the next part.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. And we are moving on to item B, Resolution 2023-45, considering reserving the right to recover. And I need to confirm, is that foregone amount the same since we amended the budget? Okay.
That's correct, and if the amendment impacted that, because you can't go up from what you... So it would remain the amount.
Thank you, Director. Just for the record, I wanted that out there. Thank you for those listening at home. Item B, Resolution 2023-45, considering reserving the right to recover $708,204 of foregone increase for fiscal year 2024 and a subsequent year pursuant to Idaho Code 63-802 sub 1F. This is an action item. Councillors? Councillor Schroeder.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-45.
Second.
Been moved by Councillor Schroeder, seconded by Councillor Kleber to approve Resolution 2023-45.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Litkey.
I have substitute motion.
Motion's in order.
I would move that we approve Resolution 2023-45 with the amendment that we do not reserve our right or utilize our right to recover the $708,204, but release those dollars and direct staff to amend that ordinance to be written as needed to reflect such.
Second.
Councillor Spicklemeyer, was that you?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councillor Litkey, seconded by Councillor Spicklemeyer, and I'll try to capture the motion here to amend Resolution 2023-45 and not reserve the right to recover $708,204 of foregone tax revenues in fiscal year 2024 and subsequent year.
When we vote, is it on being amended?
Let me... Kayla, excuse me. Kayla, do you have a question?
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. I was tracking until the very last part about possibly amending an ordinance to release money back. The budget ordinances have already been adopted, so I wasn't quite sure if the intent was just to reserve $0 foregone.
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize. I used the term ordinance. I meant to redraft Resolution, not ordinance 2023-45.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying.
And Councillor Litkey, make sure we captured that right. Then the dollar amount would be $0.
Correct.
Thank you. Are we scoucum? Amy and Tanya and Kayla, everybody's to speed, ready to go? Okay, councillors, any questions on the motion? Councillor Kleber.
I had a question, a comment. I don't know why we would vote for that. It's been a long time. I wasn't, you know, before I got involved, I think, in local politics, but there was a time when there was a fair amount of foregone sitting there, and some money from the state became available. And the city was able to use the foregone taxes along with part of the property tax increase to do Snake River Avenue. This is the last time. And I don't know who all was around then, but it was probably 15, 16, 17 years ago. It was falling apart. With that one shot right there, that job was done that summer. Why would you give up that opportunity? We don't have a whole lot of opportunities given to us by the State of Idaho. So I can't support that.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Schroeder.
Yes, I can't support that either for the very same reasons. We need a project, and we can utilize that. It's a one-year thing for the taxpayer, but we have the ability to go on and finish a project that is really needed. And that's why we started doing this. This is one of the tools that the State of Idaho gives us, and we should utilize it. And I will not support a zero foregone.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Litkey.
While I understand the prior practices of the city to utilize these dollars, the statute has changed and does not allow us the act it once had. It would take an act of the entire state legislature to make those monies available when we already have close to $3 million. This allows for immediate relief to our taxpayers when it has been mentioned more than once by Director Gordon that the plan is to not bring forth a tax increase in our budget next year. So again, we will have a chance to add to that savings if we have a plan to move forward on rope. We moved $1.6 million into a capital fund that will allow us to actually go and get a bond, if the voters show support, to actually fix a complete rope. Depending on the State of Idaho, to gift us any change in this law is, I think, as short-sighted as we can be when we can actually turn to our citizens and say, not only did we look at the budget this evening, but we did not take foregone taxes because we realize that we have close to eight to 10 years of available funds in that coffer already. So I believe that we should all support this heartily and that we continue to work on how we bring relief to our taxpayers because there are outside circumstances that we have zero control over and will need to pivot. This is one that we can control and feed when we need to, and I don't believe we need to this year and possibly any year in the near future.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kleber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Gordon, if we take that $708,000 and put it into foregone taxes, what's the effect on the average taxpayer in town?
The impact on taxpayer would not happen until
We chose to use it.
use foregone taxes.
Thank you. Councillor Forsman.
Even through a lot of the legislators, there is a lot of talk on having such a big reserve of foregone taxes and whether that's going to hurt us in the long run. And so doing more research on that and that we cannot pull more than the 3% out of it, and it would take years to even empty that amount, not to mention we're holding, in my opinion, a $3 million bank account that we could just raise the property tax on our citizens. Add one of its notice is not, I don't think, transparent nor fair. So I'm not in support. I think that we need to... There's no point in holding the $708,000 until we at least even start using that. And at this current time, we don't have a thought or a projection to use that because we are trying to work towards tax relief, not tax increase, even though they're not seeing the savings now. I think over time, if we continue to bank that, money's money, and it's going to, it's going to start causing problems for the city. And I don't think holding on to that's necessary.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kleber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to be clear, I am not advocating collecting money and turning around and using it, you know, this next year, even the year after. But we've also seen things, you know, in the last couple of years that have happened here in this town that we had no control over, where the ability to access extra funds to address said problems, you know, probably could have gone a long ways towards alleviating some problems, so...
Mayor.
Councillor Forsman.
To go back on that, we still have the 3 point whatever million dollars in there if something did happen that we can pull from at this current moment. So we're not giving that money back. That's still sitting there that we can use if something happens. Even if something drastically happened, we cannot pull all of that money out of that account to fund any, to fund a big, major project because we are held by state by a certain percentage.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Litkey.
To add to that, I would just remind the council that we did not make any adjustments to our reserves with our former motions earlier this evening. So we still have a healthy amount of reserves that would be there for access if needed. And it's certainly more than the amount that we would be able to pull from the foregone account.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Just clarification, I know the comment that Councillor Forsman made, I just... So Director, is that's correct? Those would be available just minus this amount, the 708?
Correct. Whatever council does tonight, it won't change the current balance of foregone taxes that are currently with the state, which I'll add, that's $2,992,000.
Thank you. Mayor.
Councillor Forsman.
Can I ask a question? So, and excuse me for putting you on the spot for math. How, 3% is our total. So how much is that total amount and out of that if we chose to pull out of that? In one year, that we could pull a dollar.
So you could take 3% for capital. So that would be $708,000 that you could take. So you'd have roughly over three years of capital funding you could do from that foregone balance. You could technically take 4% in one year. If you were going to take 3% for capital, another percent for operations and maintenance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Litkey.
Would, we would have to identify the capital project.
Correct.
That's my understanding, councillor.
That's correct. In your resolution, you would have to specifically state what capital project you were funding if you were to levy for capital needs.
Question.
Ever follow up, Councillor Litkey?
I'm not a follow-up question, just a comment again that, while $700,000 looks like a lot. It looks like a lot of money that we could take away from the tax base and allow us to work smarter and harder with the means that we have in front of us to make sure that we can address the needs we have, which I think, I again will commend the mayor and staff of the taxing. I think we continue to do that. I think that we can look at our properties and get rid of some of the things that are costing us more than they are bringing value to the city. And we can really start looking at smart government moves that allow us to attack things of importance and not just keep stowing away and continuing to plan and never really accomplishing anything. I think this will be a catalyst to us as a council to ensure that we push forward and make sure that we are doing the things we need to do, that we are accessing funds available to us by the State of Idaho and the federal government. I think there's dollars out there. I don't think we need to keep taking from our taxpayers.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Forsman.
All right, just one last question. In an event of some kind of emergency, like one we experienced this last year, can we pull from that any for emergencies? Or it has to be something?
It has to be done as part of your budget adoption, and there has to be a resolution passed at that time on what you would be taking from foregone and the purpose for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Schroeder.
Ms. Gordon, if we never use the money, it isn't increasing anyone's taxes. Is that correct?
Reserving the amount and...
Reserving the amount and maintaining it at the state will not increase our tax base or our tax levy, only if council were, in a subsequent year, to utilize those. It would increase tax levy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Littkey?
Director Gordon, or Mr. Mayor, whoever wants to answer this question. By not taking it, does it result in tax relief to our citizens?
I can answer that, Counselor, and then I'll watch for Counselor, or Director Gordon, if she wants to correct me on anything. I think what it does is it just removes the potential, or the threat, however you want to look at that, of a future tax increase. By removing that from your forgone, I guess, you know, there's no guarantees what can happen next year, too, you know, in the state legislature. But as it stands today, as Director Gordon said, you can take 1%, and that 1% is 1% of your budget, your annual budget. It's not 1% of the balance in there. And you could take that and up to 3% for construction. So when you exhaust those monies, they're gone. But it does, it does hang out in the minds of legislators, for example, when they start looking at tax policies. They do study the forgone balances across the state, and it does influence tax policy. So there's really a lot more to it than, maybe than what we're deciding here, because if a future legislature were to look at the city of Lewisville, for example, and say, wow, look at the city of Lewisville, they have a very large forgone balance, it may not reflect favorably on us. It, and then it's hard to go back sometimes and say, we need some help. We need some other types of relief from the state. So it probably is a double-edged sword. But, you know, some good comments have been raised. Counselor Kleberg raises a good point. Quite honestly, there's still capacity, budget capacity, in our current budget as a result of past forgone tax revenues, and that's where we're at today. So I don't know if it helps you, or if I answered it completely, but... Counselor Forssman, did you have any other comments?
Well, I guess what you were saying, as far as it might not look favorably on us, maybe they're looking at us when we try to go for help on other things. The state might be looking more. Well, they have this big old reserve sentiment, so they don't need as help as maybe other cities do. And so it seems like that would be them wanting us to use that before we exhaust other areas of finding money to help our city, which then is a tax increase to our citizens. So I don't really see the benefit when we're trying to stay away from increasing taxes.
Counselors, are you comfortable with me calling for the row? No further comments? Okay, Clerk Rocky?
Council President Littkey?
Just to clarify, this is on the substitute motion, correct?
We're, pardon me, Counselor, for interrupting, and Clerk Rocky. Counselor Townsley asked a question if we're voting on the amendment, the amended motion, the substitute motion, and we are. Thank you for clarifying that, Counselor Townsley. We're voting on the motion to take no forgone taxes this year. Clerk Rocky?
My vote is aye.
Clerk Rocky, please.
Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Townsley?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Aye.
The substitute motion passes. Thank you, Counselors. Next, we will move to Roman numeral nine, unfinished and new business. Item A, City Council comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council, or an item that may come for the city council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion.
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
I want to commend our police officers. When I was taking my son his first day of school, they're out there making sure people are being slow, and realizing that school is starting, so I... And the fire department. I don't know if the fire department makes a habit of doing that every year. Yeah, okay, the first time my kid's been in kindergarten, so this is new for me. And that's awesome. We were, my husband even mentioned how even the fire departments here are helping out, making sure that our kids are taken care of, and that our citizens are being aware and educated on the school starting. So I just, I commend our police officers and our fire, because they're, they're amazing, and they're what keeps us safe. As well as I commend our staff, I know that these budget times are not easy, especially given last-minute request is hard and time-consuming, and you guys are putting in the work, and it is appreciated by me, and I'm sure as well as the other council. And you guys are diligent, and to make sure that we have as much information as that we can, I will do better next, next go-around, where I give off my opinion sooner that we go over it. And I highly suggest maybe we do a couple more budget sessions before we do our final readings for the, for the citizens. So maybe we have some more time to go through it as council in the future year, as well as have the goal of trying to maybe make a cut, if possible, depending on where financially we are headed, so. But just, I appreciate all the work that you guys have done, and I know that our last council session, it might not feel that way, but I, I just wanted to go through the budget, and I appreciate everything that you guys have, have done and put up with.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Townsley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that city staff knows how much I appreciate them and all the hard work that they do in keeping our city an important place and a special place. And thank you.
Other council comments? No? Okay, we'll keep moving this long. City Boards, Commission? Counselor Littkey?
Did I cut you off? No, I'm going to keep...
That's okay. I, but if I could, I would. I do have a comment.
Please.
I just wanted to quote the city's website as the role of the city council. As we enter into election season, I would just like to remind everybody, those that are considering to run, and those of us that are sitting up there and in our jammies, because we're, have a low-grade fever and don't want to spread germs. But our role is to represent the city as its political leadership, to adopt and amend city ordinances and resolutions, to determine city policies and standards of service, to determine through the annual budget how much money is to be spent and for what purposes, to determine what taxes are to be levied, to approve contracts, agreements and bids, and to appoint citizens to various advisory boards and commissions. Coming from a nonprofit world where I am governed by a board of directors, I know the value of a council that pays attention, who does the homework, and that our role is simply to be good stewards of the job in front of us, and the bulk of that being a large amount of money. And on top of that, I, while I recognize the former counselor who spoke earlier in citizen comments, I would just remind that we are to trust and value our staff, but we are to verify and to be those sideboards, so that they can do the best job that they can. And with that, I would say that Amy and her team and the directors have come forward with really good ideas, and I think that we are moving in the right direction, and so I do commend the staff for that. We have not had an easy 2023, and I've seen some very good leadership emerge, and I am very proud of the staff and want them to know that we do see that, and we do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, Mayor comments. I'll just repeat what Counselor Littkey said about the filing period for city council positions. You can turn them in starting today through September 8th. So if there's anyone listening, you can come by the city clerk's office and pick up an application packet, take that over to the county, get some things, some business taken care of over there, and come back to the city clerk's office and turn it in. If you'd like to be a part of this and serve your community, I would encourage you to do that. Thank you. Next, Item D, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. Counselors, nothing? Agenda topics? No? Okay, Roman...
Mayor?
Counselor Littkey?
I apologize again, I'm sorry. I would like to bring the personnel manual to a work session, so that we can review and make sure that there's no adjustments needing to be made. I know there's been some IRS changes, et cetera. I know that's usually brought to us in January, but I would, I would like a work session, so that we can discuss as a group, if that's at all possible, before that January review date comes.
Certainly, that's possible, Counselor. I would suggest, let's see, September's work session is not going to probably work for us. We could look at it possibly in October, or we could do it in November after the election. Do you have a preference? Otherwise, I'll just look and find a spot for it to land.
Yeah, I think we can kind of base it off of workload. Just gives us a chance to review and make sure we have it set for the upcoming year.
I'll take a look, Counselor, on that, and then I'll work with Clerk Rocky on that. Other agenda topics, Counselors? No? Okay, Counselors, we move to Roman numeral 10, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
It's been moved by Counselor Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Forssman to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carried. We stand adjourned. Thank you, Counselors.